...company presents America's Town Meeting of the Air.
Town Meeting tonight! Town Meeting to Nutbrook, New Jersey. Are you preparing to grow old, President of Claude Pepper? Marion Folsom, Dr. Daniel Polling, Eugene Kenny, Dr. George Lawton, and Houston Peterson as guest moderator. Hear both sides and make up your own minds. Town Meeting tonight! Town Meeting tonight! Everybody listen!
Tonight we welcome you to Bound Brook, New Jersey, the thriving industrial center of historic Somerset County, where we are the guests of the Somerset County Community Forum. It was here to the beautiful Upper Raritan River Valley that Washington brought his small army of colonials after the Battle of Princeton, and that the young republic founded on the principles of liberty and democracy successfully defended its right to survive. Today, more than a century and a half later, the citizens of Somerset County have banded together in the same spirit to meet the challenge of a changing world. Tonight's meeting brings to a close the program of the Somerset County Community Forum. For the last few weeks, the forum, sponsored by business, religious, and other civic organizations, has been conducting an experiment in self-education under the theme of "The World We Want." And now to preside over our discussion, pitchheading for Mr. George V. Denny Jr. is our moderator, Mr. Houston Peterson, author and professor of philosophy at Rutgers University. Mr. Peterson.
Good evening, everybody. This is indeed Houston Peterson, pitchheading for George Denny. Let me at once violate the rules of public speaking and begin with some statistics. Today, nearly eleven millions of our population are over sixty-five. By the year nineteen eighty, between twenty-two and twenty-six millions will be over sixty-five, and more than one-third of our entire population will be over forty-five. As these are the facts, we are facing tonight a tremendous question. Are you preparing to grow old successfully? Or if you are already over forty-five, are you getting as much out of life as you should? Are you bringing as much to life as you can? When millions were unemployed during the Great Depression, men and women in their forties, you will remember, were considered old and began to be old. But when millions were needed for war production, men and women in their fifties, sixties, seventies, and indeed eighties were found to be useful and happy citizens. Now the emphasis again seems to be on youth, and people in their middle and later years often get the runaround as if experience were a handicap rather than an advantage. Our speakers tonight are Senator Claude Pepper, Democrat of Florida; Marion B. Folsom, Treasurer of the Eastman Kodak Company; Dr. Daniel A. Polling, President and Editor of the Christian Herald; and Eugene J. Kenny, Former Assistant Treasurer of the Standard Vacuum Oil Company of New York. And to put them on the spot, we will hear from our special interrogator, Dr. George Lawton, psychologist and author of the forthcoming book, Aging Creatively. And now to begin our discussion, the distinguished United States Senator from Florida and member of the Senate Labor and Public Welfare Committee, the Honorable Claude Pepper, will point out what he thinks our government should do for our older citizens. Senator Pepper.
Mr. Chairman, my fellow Peterson, our older people are the nation's fathers and mothers. And the Bible tells us in the Fifth Amendment, a commandment, "Honor thy father and thy mother, that thy days may be longer from the land which the Lord thy God giveth thee." Dr. Polling this evening will tell you about the intellectual and spiritual side of growing old successfully. Mr. Kenny will point out the essential quality of self-reliance in successful seniority. Mr. Folsom will speak about what private enterprise is doing to provide retirement for older workers. My role is to speak of what the government should provide. Of course, we all know that man cannot live by bread alone. Of course, it is the drive within us which makes us all spend ourselves in our various tasks and labors. Of course, older people must have access to adequate medical hospital care. Certainly, they are entitled to decent home. But no one can expect the public to provide in his old age more than a bare decent minimum level of living. What one expects to enjoy in his old age above the decent necessities of physical existence will still have to come from what he has saved by diligence and thrift, or from some system of insurance, public or private, to which he has made a reasonable contribution. I know, as you do, what a sense of importance means in sustaining an old age. So I don't want to see any man or woman have to quit his or her job at any arbitrary age. Let them work on as long as they want to and can. And if they cannot do full-time work, let there be available by wise planning part-time work, publicly or privately provided. But let us see the Fifth Commandment. Let every man and woman who becomes disabled or who reaches sixty and wishes to claim it for reasons satisfactory to himself or herself have an assurance of at least fifty dollars a month as a federal contribution, the funds to be raised by the best-found form of general federal taxation, possibly through a gross income tax as the Townsend Plan proposes upon all. The present national average of thirty-eight dollars a month is shamefully inadequate. Then let the state add to this federal fifty dollars a month as they will. Then let us extend the present old age and survivors' insurance subsidy to cover all employed workers and improve the plan so that all employed workers can build up larger retirement funds to which they can contribute. The present average of twenty-four dollars a month for single employees, forty dollars a month for retired couples is grossly too little. This, of course, is all in addition to the fifty-dollar federal contribution I mentioned. Private industry must expand and improve its own retirement plan. And of course, people must continue to take to the limit of their ability private insurance. With all older people encouraged to work and aided in finding work, and with a system of public assistance and public and private insurance, such as I've mentioned, and with the intellectual, social, and spiritual values of all human existence emphasized as they should be, we can brighten the evening of life with satisfaction and success for every man and woman in our great land.
Thank you, Senator Pepper. And now we will hear from our next speaker, one of the country's leading industrialists, Mr. Marion B. Folsom, Treasurer and Director of the Eastman Kodak Company. His position as Chairman of the Employee Benefits Committee of the National Association of Manufacturers makes him especially qualified to discuss the responsibility of industry to older workers. Mr. Folsom.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with my good friend Senator Pepper that government has a responsibility. But I don't think I would agree with quite all he suggests. The present federal old age insurance plan should be improved and extended to all employed persons. In recent years, many business concerns have adopted pension plans to help employees meet financial problems of old age. Under these plans, long-service workers can retire and receive monthly income for life in addition to the benefits which they receive on the Social Security. We have a record of almost seven thousand company plans, and these companies employ about ten million workers. Over six thousand of these plans have been adopted since nineteen forty, after the Social Security Act was passed. As a rule, they provide a normal retirement age of sixty-five. This does not, in most plans, mean compulsory retirement at age. The exact date of retirement depends upon the individual's work, his health and ability, and employment conditions. The costs of the plans are borne sometimes entirely by the company; in other cases, the employee contributes. The financing of pension plans has to be very carefully planned because they cover a long period and payments increase rapidly for many years. The Kodak Company adopted a pension plan in nineteen twenty-eight. The next year, payments to the retired employees amounted to twelve thousand dollars, with only a few employees retired. In nineteen thirty-eight, the payments amounted to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. This year, the twentieth year of the plan, the retired employees will receive over one million dollars. This cost will keep on increasing for many years. Our plan is insured. In the recent years, we have been paying the insurance company over four million dollars a year to build up an adequate fund to meet larger payments in the future. Why does a business concern adopt a pension plan with a heavy cost involved? A force of able, long-service, loyal employees is the concern's greatest asset, and a pension plan is an important factor in maintaining such a force. When a retirement occurs, a young employee is given an opportunity, and if the supervisor retires, promotion may be given to several persons. Good management does not think that it is fair or good business to let out a long-service employee as they know he will have to take too drastic a reduction in his living standard. An adequate pension plan also has a stimulating effect on morale, as both younger and older workers can look forward to retirement age with less worry about their economic security. Why is a competent plan necessary for the Social Security? Most employees agree that it is sound to have this contributory old age insurance plan provide a basic protection against dependent old age. The competent plan is given additional pension so that the retired worker will not have to take too sharp a reduction in his living standards. With his family gone, of course, he can live on less than his younger years. While the two plans together give a good base for retirement income, it is very important for the individual to accumulate savings during his working lifetime to provide additional income. Business concerns have two other problems in connection with the older workers. First, to survey their various occupations to see what jobs can be handled efficiently by the older worker prior to retirement. Second, to help the employer prepare for his retirement so that he can more easily adjust to a changed situation. Thus, targets are being made toward meeting the financial problem of old age. More concerns are adopting pension plans. Greater effort is being made to find suitable jobs for older workers prior to retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Folsom. Our next speaker may be classified as a rugged individualist, Eugene J. Kenny, Former Assistant Treasurer of the Standard Vacuum Oil Company of New York. He studied pension and retirement plans in Europe and the United States, and decided one day that a secure future was not for him, so he bought The Birds Inn, a country hotel right here in the Somerset Hills in nineteen forty-five, and started all over again. Let him tell you how he feels about his future. I should say perhaps to our great listening audience that Mr. Kenny is a kind of monster with the snows of age slightly on his head and the pink-and-white complexion of a youth. Uh, Mr. Kenny.
A doctor friend told me recently the majority of his patients suffer from an anxiety complex. His waiting room is always filled, but I am not one of his patients. For myself, I have adopted a very simple theory, one that works. I reason, if the future is designed to be unknown, why should I worry about it? Today, this very minute is important. I try to live it as well as I can. That's my preparation for tomorrow. To regain my freedom from fear, from regimentation, from the stifling effects of too much security, I had to abandon the multiple benefits I had accumulated in over twenty years as a company employee. I resigned to operate my own enterprise, but I began to live again. My theory worked. Too much security requires an explanation. I refer in particular to corporate pension plans, Social Security, old age benefits in general. Senator Pepper and Mr. Folsom seem to feel that they are a panacea for all human ills. I feel that they are merely sugar-coated palates. These schemes destroy the thrill of an unknown future, destroy it with promises of security seldom kept in full. You put in a few pennies a day, and out comes old age security. It's a magic formula, but when applied to human lives, it produces inhuman results. On a pre-selected retirement date, selected by the formula, you are expected to withdraw from a productive life. Whether... You are hired pensioners. But for the terrific price you are paying for the undeliverable security are all the costs, all the salaries, all the overheads involved in running these tremendous lotteries. You pay these costs in the end. And what a price for having someone plan your future for you. The failure of the promises is bad. The false sense of security they create is far worse. Have you ever talked to a corporate implement date? What is he doing? Working to achieve or merely waiting to collect his pension? Invariably, the latter. Why should he slave to produce? His future is all in the bag, according to the plan. That is surely a demoralizing state of mind. It hurts a man's integrity. It robs him of his vitality. He becomes a corporate tool, submissive to his job for fear of losing his pension. His purpose in life is gone. Only the pension is left. Beware of thinking that a successful old age can be planned for you via formula designed by either government or industry. Neither Senator Pepper nor Mr. Folsom can guarantee the results in terms of happiness for you. They cannot prophesy. The real solution is for you to use the weapons of common sense and courage that your ancestors found so effective. Your good common sense will prevent you from being misled by promises of bigger and better Social Security. Your courage to fight for your precious birthright, your human dignity, will not let you surrender to the harsh regimentation of a formula. Realize and enjoy the fact that your responsibility for your future is yours and yours alone.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. And now Dr. Daniel A. Polling, Editor, Syndicated Colloquialist, and President of the World Christian Endeavor Union. I have long looked forward to meeting Dr. Polling, as one of my students at Rutgers fifteen years ago was his son, one of the four heroic young chaplains who gave up their life preservers in the South Pacific that four others might live. That poignant event has recently been commemorated on a United States stamp. I remember that boy very well. His term paper was called "The Return of Misp." Dr. Polling, I'm glad to introduce you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I thank you, sir. Senator Pepper has made the case for society's stake in the problem before us tonight, and Mr. Folsom has faced the issue squarely for industry. I would look at life itself. Life begins not at forty, for you, life begins or may right where you are. Some years ago, a friend of mine, E. Francis Hyde, who, when we met, was past eighty, had long since retired from his active interests but was still president of the American Bible Society. He continued in this relationship until his death at ninety-five. Also, he was founder of New York Still Harmonic, and had been the organist of a great church before he was fifteen. From fifteen to ninety, he was both living and getting ready to live. On his ninetieth birthday, I asked him this question. Tell me, sir, your secret. How do you stay like this? He grinned and replied, "No, many I never reminisce." And that was the answer. He had thought ahead, planned ahead, and now he concentrated on the things he had laid by against the time when he would be free to do them, matters ready for his age and experience. Mentally and spiritually, he was eternal youth. Among the last words of Charles Steinmetz, "That gnome-like, gentle little man of General Electric who stood taller than the giants were these," and I quote, "The great discoveries of the future will be in the realm of the spirit. And that, men and women, is the elemental imperative, timeless but timely truth. Man has unlocked the door to the mysteries. He holds in his hand the secret of the universe, and he is afraid, more afraid than he has ever been in all of human history before. No, he's not afraid of the bomb. He is afraid of himself. He's mastered the atom, but can he master himself? This is the number-one, billion-dollar final question, and the twentieth century's ultimatum is, "Get the answer, little man. Get it or get out." That ultimatum is a most fresh beginning. Who am I to doubt of old age? And how may I, how, how can I provide against frustration and defeat in my old age? Eugene Kenny has given us his dramatic, if provocative, long-lost answer. Well, here's another. In Penny Farms, Florida, is the unique memorial community where one hundred couples, retired men and women, sergeants, missionaries, educators, and executives live a more abundant life. They are my friends. I watch them in their gardens, at their benches and desks and at their play. They have a hundred varied interests, from chickens and sheep to golf and cheese, from poetry and art to stirring device. I'm still training to go after the crown of their horseshoe champion. Definitely, life for these men and women begins right where they are. What is their secret? It has many facets, but here's the heart of it. That which gives peace of mind and the great assurance is a profound conviction that life in time and space is only life's beginning, that it is but the childhood of immortality for those who possess it, men and women. This belief is more than a conviction, however deep, and more than a faith, however strong. Our time, old age pensions, retirement incentives, and the growing partnership between youth and age are among society's imperatives, but greater than these. When life's shadows fall, is the conviction, "Ay, the experience!" May Volker by Addison on himself grow dim with age and nations sink in years, but thou shalt flourish in eternal youth on earth amidst the war of elements, the wreck of matter, and the crash of worlds.
Thank you, Dr. Polling. I have known our interrogator, Dr. George Lawton, so long, since our graduate days at Columbia University, that I am tempted to talk too freely about him. Let me simply say that he is a cautious gentleman who began to specialize in old age when he was still quite young. His splendid book, Aging Successfully, is soon to be followed by another, Aging Creatively. Dr. George Lawton, our interrogator, is now ready with some leading questions for our four speakers. So, gentlemen, if you'll join me here around the microphone, Dr. Lawton will address his first question to Mr. Pepper. Senator Pepper.
Uh, my profession brings me in contact with individual older men and women every day. They sit across the desk asking for a life to be rebuilt or to be built for the first time. If they could find a collective voice, they would say, "In order for us to aid successfully, we need to still belong to the community, to be important to it, to contribute to its work in life. We need a job or an activity to replace our job. It may be part-time. It may or may not bring in money, but it must bring in self-respect. We need friends. We need a modest income. We need a modest degree of health. We need a half dozen forms of creative self-expression." Growing on my experience with these thousands of older men and women, I would say the community should and will have to supply older persons with jobs, placement agencies, vocational and psychological guidance, retraining and rehabilitation facilities, nursing homes, suitable housing developments, schools for arts and crafts, adult education institutes, marriage counseling services, workers' cooperatives. The four speakers, I feel, have told us more about how to be old than how to prepare to grow old successfully. If all their recommendations were put into effect tonight, many of the problems of older people, I'm afraid, would still be left largely unsatisfied. Age shines with youth. I wish this point had been stressed more. Senator Pepper, with the best motives in the world, are you not arguing for a tremendous increase in the financial burden on the state? If we postpone employment for the young and cut it off for the middle age, that means that those twenty-five to forty-five have to support the young and the old. Should not the function of the government be that of helping people to help themselves?
Yes, Dr. Lawton, that's exactly what I propose. Remember, the people will be the ones to pay the tax fees to provide the funds, which will be distributed in the benefits which I enumerated. A minimum federal contribution, and I suggested fifty dollars a month to those who would claim that amount, to be supplemented by an estate contribution. But the major part of the material substance which the older person would have to rely upon would be a fund for which he had contributed or she had contributed during the working years of his or her life. It would be an insurance fund, one, a public insurance fund, another, a private insurance fund, another retirement benefit to which they would have contributed as well. I do not neglect these important things you have mentioned, but there must be minimum physical substance provided for honorable old age.
Thank you, Senator. Mr. Folsom, you feel the problem of old age is the problem of adequate pension. Can a person live by pension alone? No, of course not. But without funds to buy the necessities of life, the individual can't very well do or enjoy the other things. But with a pension as a base, he might be in a position, if he prepares for it carefully, to do many of the things which you've listed and which are so necessary if a person is to live his old age successfully. Thank you. Mr. Kenny is telling us how to become more like me. He's an exceptional person. Mr. Kenny, do you believe that all persons are equally self-reliant, equally able to handle dog-eat-dog competitions, to be self-employed as you were at such a tender age?
No, Dr. Lawton, I don't think they are. But if these people are better educated to the perils involved in having someone else plan their future for them, I think they would soon learn to be prepared to help themselves.
Well, thank you, gentlemen. I am sorry to break in now, but time does rush on madly. Uh, thank you, Senator Pepper, Mr. Folsom, Dr. Polling, Mr. Kenny, and Dr. Lawton. I want to thank also our host of the Somerset County Community Forum in Bound Brook, New Jersey. Within a few moments, we will go off the national hook-up so that the American Broadcasting Company can present important addresses from the Republican National Convention in Philadelphia. However, the town meeting will continue as usual for our audience here in Bound Brook, and you may secure a transcript of the full-hour discussion by writing to Town Hall, New York, including ten cents to cover the cost of printing and mailing. If you would like to subscribe to the bulletin for six months, includes two dollars and thirty-five cents or four fifty for the full year. Next week, your town meeting will come to you from Pasadena, California, under the auspices of William, uh, H. Joyce. Our subject will be, "What are the major issues in the coming elections?" And our speakers, Will Rogers Jr., former Democratic Congressman from California; Robert Kenny, former Attorney General of California; Victor R. Hanson, Los Angeles Attorney; and Adella Roger St. John, author and member of the executive staff of Metro Golden Mayor. Mr. Denny will be your moderator. So plan to be with us next Tuesday and every Tuesday at the Sound of the Choir's Bell.
Town Meeting next week! Town Meeting next week! What are the major issues in the coming elections? Hear both sides and make up your own minds. Town Meeting next week! Town Meeting next week! Everybody listen!
From Bound Brook, New Jersey, Town Hall in cooperation with the American Broadcasting Company and its affiliated stations has presented America's Town Meeting of the Air. You have just heard a discussion of the economic and psychological problems of older workers. One concrete demonstration of what has been done in this direction is the current campaign of the Federal Employment Service, a free, non-sectarian guidance and placement agency affiliated with the Federation of Jewish Philanthropies of New York. This employment service has been This employment service has been finding jobs for older workers, demonstrating to employers the value of the older worker through industry, and educating workers for the necessity of preparing for vocational readjustments. During the past two months, placements of the older group increased by seven hundred percent, but still the total needs of such persons in need of employment have not been met. What are you planning to do about this problem? America's Town Meeting is produced by Leonard Blair. This is ABC, the American Broadcasting Company.